I'm going to go ahead and call this -- oh, are we waiting for roll? Okay, all right, let's go ahead and start the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer De La Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
And City Attorney Salinas.
In the building.
Thank you. Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section 549-52.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So all we have is closed session today.
Item number one, conference with legal counsel pending litigation pursuant to government code section 549-56.9a, 549-54.9b, 3c, A. Carlo Montes de Oca versus City of Southgate et al. Item two, conference with legal counsel threatening litigation pursuant to government code section 549-56.9b, 3d, and e, one potential case. Item three, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 549-57.6, agency representation is Rob Houston, city manager, employee organizations are Southgate PMMA and Southgate MEA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, any additional comments on these three items?
I think from the City Attorney.
Myself either.
Okay, let me open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak, please come forward. See no one, I'll close the audience portion. Any emails on this?
No emails there.
Okay, then we're going to go into closed session.
Okay, look, are you ready, Madam City Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city council met in closed session under items one, two, and three of the closed session items. Item number one, pending litigation involving the Carla Montezalca case was not discussed in closed session, given time constraints. Item number two, conference legal counsel involving threat litigation, there's one potential case, there was no action taken in connection with that matter, however guidance was given to the city attorney. Item number three, conference labor negotiator, the city council did receive a presentation by the city manager, the agency representative, and the discussions involved ongoing negotiations with the Southgate PMMA and the Southgate MEA bargaining units. There was guidance given, but there's no vote or other action taken by the city council. No other items were discussed in closed session. That completes my report.
Thank you. Let me open this up to the audience. If anybody in the audience wishes to address us on those items that were just brought forward by the city attorney, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'm closing the audience portion, and again, no emails.
We have no emails.
Correct. Okay. I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion in two seconds. Pick one. Okay, seeing no opposition, we're closing that meeting. Say when you're ready for the next meeting. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the September 10th regular council meeting. We're gonna have the invocation by Tina Fiero, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, and the pledge of allegiance by our city treasurer, Jose de la Paz.
So please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity and the ability to meet this evening to discuss the business of the city. We ask you to guide each elected official and city staff. Please give each of them the wisdom and discernment in the decisions they make for the community. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Orzado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barron.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
Meeting compensation disclosure presented government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Okay, and before we get started, I just want to mention that we will be adjourning tonight's meeting in the memory of Christopher Garcia. He's the gentleman, the young man who lost his life during a football game at a local high school. And keep that family in your prayers, and there's a couple of GoFundMe, you wanna, yeah, go ahead.
No, I also would like to adjourn tonight's meeting and marry our Genoveva Salazar. She is the mother of two teachers at Willow Elementary School, Lourdes, and I can remember the sisters, Salazar's name, and she was a longtime neighbor of mine that I got to see very often throughout, I mean, almost 40 years living in Southgate, so.
Okay, so that will be the order. We will be adjourning.
Mr. Mayor, if we can also adjourn in regards to a lot of our residents that have passed away, unfortunately, due to overdoses, specifically fentanyl.
All right.
I don't want to give out any names, but I know that we've had several residents that have passed away.
Thanks, yeah.
Yes, so just being mindful.
That'll be the order. Okay, let's open up the public hearing. Item number one, please.
Following the conclusion of the public hearing, the city council will consider, A, adopting a resolution approving the fiscal year 2324 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, CAAPER, and authorizing the city manager and designee to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development the fiscal year 2324 CAAPER. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Rob, is that you?
No, we have a housing director, housing manager, Carol here to give the report on CAAPER. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As a recipient of the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, and the Home Investment Partnership Programs, funding that we received from HUD, we are required to prepare a consolidated annual performance evaluation report, also known as CAAPER. The CAAPER report reports the accomplishments of the CDVG and home-funded projects that occurred during the fiscal year from July 1st, 2023 to June 30, 2024. So the accomplishments that we have for the fiscal year 2324, we assisted 76 persons via the CDVG-funded public service grants, and that includes the persons that were served by the family violence prevention program. and that includes the persons that were served by the Family Violence Prevention Program, the youth that participated in Southgate Police Explorers Program, and participants that receive assistance with equipment to help navigate their disabilities via the Southern California Rehabilitation Services Home Modification Program. In addition, we assisted two businesses with commercial rehabilitation. We helped 306 tenant landlord issues that were resolved via the Fair Housing Foundation. 13,350 graffiti abatement assignments were completed and staff responded to 2,029 calls, which benefit over 73,000 residents. That's all the accomplishments that we have, and the recommended action is to adopt a resolution receiving and approving the program year 2324 CAAPER and authorizing the City Manager or his designee to submit the report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Department.
Thank you. Let me open it up to the audience. If anybody in the audience wishes to address us on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the audience portion. Any emails on this?
We have no emails.
Okay, I'm going to close that portion. Okay, let's bring it back. Did you want to add anything else?
No, I think that sums it up.
Okay. Questions, concerns?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtado?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Very well done. Seeing you were all nervous over there, right? Just teasing you. Okay. Let's go ahead and do comments from the audience. Okay. Step forward, state your name, address. At this time, we open it up to the audience, and because these are non-agendalized items, we do not respond, but staff will take mental notes of this and may be able to make a comment after that. So you have three minutes. State your name and address. Is it green?
There you go. Okay. It's been a while since I've been up here. Enrique Vega, 63, 20 and 1/2, Gotham Street in the city of Bell Gardens. I think most of you know, have known me. Some of you met me, it's hard to believe, 20 years ago, when I was a young man, still working for the younger and smaller. Some of you met me now in my middle age with children. It's good to see everybody. The meeting is going very smoothly and efficiently. It's been a long time since I've seen a meeting go that well. So I'm a former staffer for Hector de la Torre when he was the 50th Assembly Member here in Southgate and Southeast LA. But I'm here today on behalf of a client of our firm, SDK Development, with regard specifically to the property located at, I believe it's 13050 Paramount, the old El Rancho Market, that our client is very interested in that piece of land to develop it into a mixed-use development, which would include 65 residential units, would also include a 3,500-square-foot restaurant, which, the design is beautiful. It looks, reminds me of El Gaucho Grill over in the Downey Promenade, and what we like to call a high-end butcher shop. It's really kind of a high-end market that sells prime cuts of meat, also sells, you know, selected wines and cheeses and pretty much everything you would need to kind of host, you know, a nice event at your home. And so I know that there was a process, I believe in 2021, before we had a client in that space. I believe it was, because it's city property, it went through the Surplus Land Act. And so we didn't have a client at that point, but we did notice through our regular, you know, we track City Council meetings regularly and did see that back in June, I believe it was going to be on the closed session. Reached out to some staff, reached out to the consultant that you guys hired. Did inform us that, you know, because it was late, or it had already gone through the process, our proposal wouldn't be able to be considered this time around. But, you know, we submitted something unsolicited, just to have something in front of you in the event that, you know, down the line, there would be some options. So I just also wanted to thank Mr. City Manager for replying to my email, letting us know that is now kind of in the, I believe it's in the state's hands, you know. So anytime that it comes back out and it's back out to, you know, proposal, we would like to submit a revamped proposal, because the other one was a little bit rushed. We'd like to polish it up a little bit, make it look nice, and put that before you. So just, again, just interested in finding out the timing of that all and, you know, when we could be considered for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Give her only two minutes. I'm teasing. I'm teasing.
Two minutes is enough. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of the Council. My name is Anna, and I'm the Director for the Southgate Chamber of Commerce, and we have some great news. We have a mariachi festival coming up in a couple of weeks. It is Saturday, the 21st. You are all invited to join us. We are focusing our performers to be elementary, middle school, and high school students. So we have a great reaction already. We have one mariachi group that is coming in with 40 performers. Where are we going to fit them? We don't know yet, but that's a really good problem to have. We're getting some great reactions. We'll be supporting a few small businesses during this event, and we'll be inviting a few nonprofits as well from the community. So please join us Saturday, the 21st. Secondly, I want to thank everyone. We just had our state-of-the-city mayor. I've been getting, of course, the good news and the compliments and, you know, after the whole party, but I would like to hear from you all, feedback. I want to thank our sponsors. Of course, without them, we cannot make this happen. But the city staff is just amazing. Thank you to Parks and Rec and everyone that's involved in that event. I just hope that you all had a great time. The message from the mayor was just amazing. Again, I'm getting, I'm continuing to get a lot of compliments on how it was presented to the community. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hurtado and Councilmembers. I'm Amy from the Leland Arbea Library on Tweedy Boulevard. I just have a quick update. As of later this week, our, my counterpart, Julie Chan Hernandez, at the Hollydale Library, will be leaving county service. She's moving on to bigger, better things, and we're very excited for her. But from here on, I will be the contact for Hollydale Library. So if you have any questions, anything going on, let me know. You know how to find me. Councilmember Rios has found me just randomly wandering into the library as well. So I welcome you to visit both libraries to find me at either. Another announcement, I believe last time she was here, she did mention that the bookmark contest is underway. The last day submit, the last date to submit an entry is October 5th. That's for students K through 12. Any artists or budding artists in your life, please encourage them to submit an entry form. After they win locally, they get sent and they have a chance to win the grand prize. Go down to the Board of Supervisors, big ceremony. It's very exciting. So anyone that you know that might be a budding artist, please encourage them to send in an entry. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? You're not including TK?
Sorry, not at this time. It's K through 12 only. Sorry.
I'm a TK teacher, by the way. That's why I'm asking and advocating for my TK.
I know.
Because they're awesome drawings.
You can encourage them to submit one. We might sneak them in. I won't tell if you won't tell.
You got it.
And before he says anything, no, no college students either, okay? Just want to make sure. We don't want to have him left out. Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion. Okay, email time.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have two emails. One from Mr. Mario Dominguez. He states, number one, I am concerned about our city hall's media and communication person, Ms. Justelle Hernandez, lacks her own camera for recording important events and meetings. Currently, she relies on the Parks and Recreation Department for camera, which seems inappropriate given the significance of the events. I urge City Council to instruct the City Manager to use discretionary funds to purchase necessary recording equipment. His number two was the call-in feature. There is no call-in feature for public comments on tonight's agenda, which is inexcusable with only six items for which are actionable. He requests the City Manager to, he demands an explanation from the City Manager and expresses frustrations, the lack of process on this issue. Then number three was a cooling station. He says that there is an absence of cooling stations during the current extreme heat wave, and it's inexcusable. The recent seven-hour blackout exasperated the use, the issue, and the failure to provide any relief is deeply disappointing. That is from Mr. Mario Dominguez. I have another one from Ms. Lizeth Ruiz, Lizeth Ruiz, I'm sorry. And she states that, good evening, Council and others present. This is Lizeth Ruiz, apologies for not being able to make it tonight, but I really wanted to see the debate. As for some quick updates, she has a number one as her AB 71, I'm sorry, AB 617. In April 2021, the Cell Community Steering Committee allocated 2.5 million in carbon community air protection incentive funds for green space projects. The Cell Green Space Program, RFP, has been reissued, which applicant, applications are accepted through November 8th. Unfortunately, no applications were received during the last RFP period. This is a great opportunity for our city as we have shovel-ready projects that use this funding. Thank you to Gladys and Arturo for their hard work with AQMD. Her number two is XIDE. EPA has proposed adding the XIDE technologies, Vernon's site of the National, National Priorities List of Superfund Sites. Comments are being accepted from September 4th to, through November 4th. I encourage everyone to submit comments requesting cleanup of not the underground water, but also the neighboring Homes to California standards. More information is available at the epa.gov/newsreleases/epaprocesses. She also, number three, is the heat wave responses. She applauds the city and library for opening cooling centers during the recent heat wave. In light of Mr. Mario Dominguez has suggested a splash pad. Given potential contamination at Hollydale, she recommends this be a possibility at the Southgate Park. I have number four, sidewalk conditions. She also provided me three pictures that I have forwarded to you, and will be, and anyone is able to view them at the City Clerk's office. And many of the sidewalks are damaged. While I appreciate the city workers' quick repairs, I question the durability of the asphalt fixes and their visual appeal. I encourage the city to find funds for more permanent solutions. The sidewalk along Alexander Avenue toward Abbott Road in Linwood is in poor condition and possesses wrist rollers and wheelchairs for wheelchair users. And that's basically it. She, she has attached the photos, and she says, good evening.
Did you put yourself on three minutes on that? Because that was.
I think that was three minutes.
Okay. All right, I'm going to close the audience portion at this time. Okay, let's go around the room, and staff, if you heard anything that pertains to your department, please try to address it. Okay, Arturo, let's go with you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council. I do have a CAP presentation for you tonight, a very brief one, but I do want to address the comments from Lizeth regarding sidewalk repairs and the durability of the asphalt. You know, the sidewalk repairs are a process to complete. Asphalt is not something we want to use because, you know, as a choice, it's really more of, it's really the only type of material that's available for an immediate and temporary repair. So what happens is, when we, when an issue gets reported to us, we go out with the same day or within a day or what have you, and we do that immediate temporary repair. The goal is to replace all of the asphalt concrete with permanent repairs. But that is, according to the ADA Transition Plan, it's more than a $20 million cost in where we're at. I do want to mention that we did activate a new maintenance program this year, where we're going to do a very aggressive grinding of sidewalks. So this year, we should expect thousands of locations more to be completed than in any single year prior. So there is not an alternative to the asphalt yet, but the, we are putting together an alternative program that we're operating daily, so we can expect to see much less asphalt in the future. Regarding the, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have one question, because one of the photos that she submitted, and I'm not sure if you had opportunity to view it. It's that alleyway that sits behind Abbott and leads into Southgate that, that's asphalted. Is there a clear distinction if that's Southgate or Linwood property?
There is a distinction, and there may be facilities that serve Linwood that are Southgate, and I can't remember, like a sewer line, for example. So I'll take a look at those pictures and what alley is being addressed. But regardless, when those issues come to our attention, we'll coordinate with Linwood, and they coordinate with us. So we kind of treat it as, we respond to it as if it was either or responsibility. And we had that same scenario at intersections and everything that we share. So we work well together to address that. But I'll, I don't know who owns the alley where the, on the pictures. I haven't seen the pictures.
Okay. I will tell you, Arturo, that years ago, Jose Solatche was the mayor there. I told him that we were going to build the wall and we were going to make them pay for it. Because it is kind of confusing out there when you look at it. There's, I know that, for example, on Atlantic and Abbott, there's a 7-Eleven and there's a dental office. The dental office is in Southgate, but the sign that says, "Welcome to Southgate," is north of that. So I'm always confused as to where that divider is at.
I'll take a look and provide more information. So, yeah, usually it's not a line, usually a zigzag, and it goes up. Like on Tweedy, it goes up and down and in every direction, so. But I'll provide the information tomorrow.
Okay.
Regarding the CAP update, I just want to mention again that the 2D Mile Complete Streets project is now under construction and will be until March 26th of 2025. Things that we would like the public to know is that we're aware of the impacts to the community, and the construction is being phased in a way that, you know, right now, the contractor's on a five-day program, meaning he'll start at a particular sidewalk segment. He'll start removals on Monday, and by Friday, that work is complete. Then he moves on to the next one, so that businesses are seeing the impact limited to that week. So he started, they started on San Carlos, they're working their way to the end of the Tweedy Mile on the west side, and then they're going to work their way back. But that's what we can expect to see. Businesses are open during construction, particularly during that week, where sidewalk work is occurring in front of them, and so you want everybody to know that. We also want the public to be aware, right? It's a busy street, both pedestrians and vehicles. So drive with care and with caution, as well as, we highly encourage the public to not walk inside construction zones, as we've personally witnessed that before. There are signs that are expected to keep the pedestrians from entering, and we're seeing that they're not always being followed. But we're doing everything we can to address pedestrians as well.
How is helping the businesses out there, though? Because they're, they've got to stay in business, right? So how?
So one way was, we moved over to this type of phasing, right? Where start the work on Monday and complete it by Friday. Where we can, we're looking at placing pathways to be able to get it from the side street to the sidewalk, but that's not always possible, particularly when the handicap ramp is removed and they're pouring it and it's wet. So, but we're doing everything we can. With construction comes impacts, but we're doing everything we can. Next slide.
If I could interject just on that question, what we're trying to do, I just want to also add that our city communication team has been doing some social media, letting people know businesses open, letting them know there's alleyway access for many of the Tweedy businesses that could avoid the construction there, meeting with the chamber, making sure there's conversations. We're actually just finished having a dialogue to make sure that we could still let the trees be lit and the garlands be added to make sure we don't lose that even during construction. So we think we can accomplish that for this Christmas. And there's also, we're looking at possibly getting some banners to say, "Still open." And so we're doing what we can to try to make sure we're supporting business.
Good, okay.
Next slide. So just a quick update on the three parks that. So just a quick update on the three parks that we are working on. The Holliday Community Park, I'm pleased to announce that on next Monday, we're going to be starting construction again towards completion. We should be completed with that work in December. The urban, let's see, the Circle Park renovation, that project, we're also going to start construction on Monday and that'll be under construction through March of 2025. And then on the Urban Orchard Project, we still don't have the permits from the county, but we have completed everything that they've requested of us. We've now understand that they've accepted the application and forwarded on to the state. And so we're now kind of in limbo, just waiting for that. But in the meantime, the project is out to bid now for construction. So we're trying to time award of a construction contract with county approval. Next slide. So just a quick update on the, our two major street improvement projects on Garfield and on Long Beach Boulevard. We're at the tail end. On Garfield Avenue, we're just wrapping up a miscellaneous striping and some striping for bicyclists, but that should be completed soon. And then on the Long Beach Boulevard project, we're wrapping up landscaping as well as wiring to light the pedestrian lights, but we're at the, at the tail end. Next slide.
Arturo, I'm sorry. Regarding the Long Beach corridor.
Yeah.
There's some new black light posts there. Are those wired light posts or are they solar powered?
Those are wired light posts. And so the outstanding wiring that is done is for those light posts. So those will be lit.
And is there any update on the pebble area on the corners of Long Beach and Tweety?
Yes. The project will be substantially complete within the week, but it doesn't include what we consider the punch list. So the punch lists are all those miscellaneous items that we're trying to address. We're doing a audit of the review of all of those, all of those ramps. Yes, they all meet standard, but we can see why there's a concern. So we're working with the designer to implement another standard where it's possible. So the audit has been completed. The designer is going to put together a plan. So the goal is going to be to try to make those as standard as possible, recognizing that there's very little room or there's doors right at the corner, right? Where you can't, it's kind of hard to create for that where you have steps and everything else. So we're doing what we can, and so that's under review right now.
Right. And then just follow back up on the lights. So are the old lights going to be removed from that area?
Actually, no. So as part of the Long Beach project, one of the goals was to enhance pedestrian safety as we tried to do with Firestone, but we didn't have enough budget. So on Long Beach Boulevard, we had budget to install additional pedestrian lighting to further light that particular corridor. It's a safety improvement. It's not one that we've done on every quarter corridor. In fact, we didn't, we didn't have the budget to light the entire Long Beach corridor with that pedestrian lighting, but we're pursuing more funding. But it's, it's, it's an enhancement to lighting and everything will stay in place.
Okay, well, then I would just ask that it's going to be an eyesore because it's going to be two different lighting posts all the way down the corridor. It might not look the best, most appealing. So it's something that we probably should work on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that. The initial goal was to put them on the existing lights. They couldn't support the additional weight. This is not necessarily unique because pedestrian lights don't light the roadway, but we'll take a look at that and take it into consideration. Next slide, please.
Arturo, if I can hold you just for a second on that one. I've saved the lights. I would agree with my colleague, however, I'm going to give it an opportunity because sometimes we're quick to judge. We're making it walkways. However, there are parts on Long Beach that are very difficult to walk. Are we also going to be repairing the sidewalk? Because there's no point in me putting a light if I know I'm going to, pavement is uneven, especially in between Southern all the way up to Firestone.
We'll take a look at all of this.
Look at that because I know we're trying to encourage our community to become a little bit healthier and be out and walking, which helps with their mental health. But if our sidewalks are not adequate, I'm just afraid that we're going to be causing more of a liability in having more pedestrians out and trips and falls.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. Yeah, I believe all the sidewalks are repaired in that section. I don't know that there's any area of sidewalk within that segment, but we'll go out and take a look to see if we missed something.
That was lifting up a lot of the sidewalks, specifically right in front of Nidos, next to one of the buildings right on Southern and between Southern and Greenwood.
Yeah, so we'll take a look at that to see if what was missed and we'll include it in the punch list. Okay, next slide, please. And then just want to highlight some of our recently completed projects. Just wanted to point out just that we're continuing to focus on our numerous infrastructure assets from our, our water systems that are providing water in residential neighborhoods. We've completed the water main replacement project as well as the water production facilities at the Hawkins Reservoir. We're, yeah, on Tweety Mile, this is, we're now on our third, second major project. We just finished the traffic signal synchronization, we're applying for grant funding to do the remainder all the way to Alameda, our residential streets. We've completed resurfacing all of those that you see up there. We're getting ready to go out to bid with our next phase. Last year, we spent more than half a million dollars in sidewalk repairs throughout the city and residential neighborhoods. And then we finally finished, after many years, all of the improvements on Firestone Corridor with the two-phase project. We just completed another $4 million, plus or minus $4 million of improvements as part of Phase Two. So I wanted to highlight this, this project completion. And I think that's it. Oh, yeah, that's it. That, I'm back.
Mr. Mayor, if I made sense, it's already, we're talking to Arturo. Have a couple of concerns from the community. The tree trimming. Some of the tree trimming on the west side hasn't been done. When is that going to happen? Because there are some trees that are so overgrown that the street sweeper can't even go through because it's, they're that low. So when are certain areas scheduled?
So two, two issues. One is the grid trimming and the other is, is street sweeping. So we started on zone 13, which is in the south middle area of the city, south of Tweety. Just completed that and we're working our way west. At the next council meeting, I'll, I'll show an exhibit of where we're at schedule wise, but we're working in that direction. We may be on that side on the north of Firestone, but I'll have to confirm. With regards to street sweeping, you know, the general public can give us a call anytime when they see a tree that's prevented street sweeping. We'll go out and take care of that immediately. So it's something.
It's that low that cars are, the trees are hitting the cars.
Right, yeah, we'll, we'll go out there as soon as we find out and get those trimmed.
I'll just, I'll just add to Go Southgate, the app. So use that, take a picture, we'll fix it.
Yeah, but here's the thing though. It was a great point, but why doesn't the street sweeper notify us?
So the street sweeper, it's also some issue that's come to our attention. Part of our contract with the sweet, street sweeping company nationwide is they're supposed to report a number of things and low hanging branches is one of those. Doesn't always happen, so we re-up with them. And, you know, it's just a, a continuous improvement kind of thing. So as soon as we find out, we'll go out and address those issues.
Yeah.
Thank you. The other one had to do with a lot of trash. And again, it goes back to, is it Linwood or is it Southgate? Right off of Seminole and Alameda, they are constantly, constantly dropping all kinds of trash in that area. Unfortunately, on the railroad as well, but the railroad is not our jurisdiction, but Seminole is. So maybe I can sit down with you so we can see what we can work out, but I've gotten a lot of complaints from a lot of the residents in that area from Southgate, not from Linwood.
And same issue, meaning, and no matter where you see those issues, just report to the public works and we'll work with Linwood if it's on their side. Well, sometimes we coordinate cleanup or if it's on the Southgate side, we'll take care of it. If it's on the railroad, unfortunately, that's where the majority of it is that I've seen and it just takes a long time for them to come up. But we'll also take the lead in coordinating. So no matter what, the city manager mentioned the city app, if it gets reported, we'll go out there and take a look.
Okay. Mayor, I just, we're, we're on this topic because I.
I'm sorry, Arturo.
Just one last thing. And I think I brought it before, Arturo, and that's the west side. I know you did all the streets around Tweety over there by Trouba. You did all those neighborhood streets or whatever. That's really great up to Firestone, but Trouba is the street that's, that's the main corridor in that area. And they're saying, residents are saying, one particular neighborhood is saying, when are we going to get to that? We're going to leave it like that? So that's, that's the, you know, and like, they keep pounding me on that, so I don't know the answer.
Yeah, and, and the answer to that is that our five-year CIP for pavements is being guided by our pavement management system is sort of a ranking and we're prioritizing. And the way the plan works is attempts to address needs throughout the entire city. So Trouba is just the same condition as many streets in other areas of the city. So we focused as much of the money as possible in phase one, two, and three, all three phases on that entire west side. The next phase of work now leans over to the east side of Long Beach Boulevard. So we're moving out and eventually we'll work our way back to the west side, but the phase four focuses on another area and we'll eventually work our way all the way to Holliday as funding becomes available. Unfortunately, we just don't have the resources to do every street at the same time in any area of the city. So that's, that's what you're seeing.
Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone. So in regards to a couple of comments that were made in the public comment portion, as far as the cooling centers go, we did offer cooling centers this weekend, this past weekend, I should say, starting on Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And then we added an additional day, which was yesterday due to the extensive heat. And we had it there, the Southgate Sports Center, everything was posted on our social media, Parks and Rec, as well as the city's social media. And we'll continue to offer cooling centers as long as the weather, you know, is hot. In regards to a splash pad, just, I know that's something that has been discussed a few times. We are working on redoing a master plan for Parks and Recreation. So I would advise that, you know, residents come out and if that's something that they want to see in the community, that they come forward during the community meetings and give their ideas and suggestions so we can include that aspect as part of the Parks Master Plan. And in regards to the camera being utilized by our marketing person versus our Parks and Rec person, sometimes our, the marketing person, which is Giselle, is busy at events, doing other things. So we work in tandem with Giselle, our marketing coordinator works in tandem with her to assist sometimes in recording events and such. So that's with that. And as far as everything else for Parks and Rec, we're really excited, well, for a couple of things. One, that our parks are, are starting to get done, starting on Monday. So the Circle Park and Hollydale, as, as Art mentioned. And we're also very excited for the LA Philharmonic, who's going to be coming and, and performing for us at Southgate Auditorium on the 25th of September. There has been a little bit of change. I know we've got, we've gotten tons of, or just inundated with phone calls and inquiries about how do they, how do people attend? And we were initially telling people it's going to be first come, first served. However, we were just informed that the LA Philharmonic has posted a link or they sent a link over, letting people know that they can reserve tickets via that link. So the link will be going out first thing tomorrow morning on our social media so that people know that they can go ahead and reserve their tickets there. It is, it is a free event, so they can reserve up to nine tickets, I guess, per person or per email. So, so if you're interested in going, make sure you follow us on social media to get that information.
So, so no scalping of tickets, okay, Joshua? No scalping. You mentioned the, the air conditioning, the cooling stations, and you did a really great job of, of doing that. In fact, I want to thank our friends from the library for also allowing the, library to be a cooling station and people can read a book while they're there. But again, I did see notifications. In fact, I did what I could on copying the information from the city's page onto mine. I think others did the same thing. So again, you did a good job of informing people. Okay. Community development.
Okay, I am pleased to announce that as a result of the Housing Authority of the City of Southgate final Section Eight Management Assessment Program, known as CMAP, score for fiscal year 2020, 2024, the agency has earned a total of 130 points of a possible 130 points, achieving the highest possible overall performance rating. This certification reflects our ongoing commitment to provide efficient and high-quality housing services to the community. I wanted to also tell you that we're really proud of the hard work and dedication of our staff, who ensures that the housing needs are met with integrity and care. And this achievement underscores the Housing Authority's ability to meet and exceed federal standards, demonstrated excellence in areas such as program management, tenant services, and financial stewardship. So we remain dedicated to continuously improve our services and ensure that our program participants have access to safe, affordable housing.
Thank you. Wendy.
Good evening, Mayor. Actually, we have nothing to report this evening.
Great report. Thank you. John.
Well, as always, if you're interested in the job, go to cityofsouthgate.org, hit the jobs tab, and we have a couple of jobs. First in community development, we are recruiting for a planning manager and that position closes on September 22nd. Then in Parks and Rec, we're looking for a lifeguard, part-time position, a rec leader too, for grounds, part-time position, and a transit services coordinator, full-time position that closes on September 27th. And then in Public Works, we're looking for an assistant engineer that closes soon in two days on September 12th. We're looking for a journey electrician, another full-time position. And in the police department, we are looking for a civilian custody officer, jailer, that closes this Friday on September 15th. And we're always looking for good police officers and for those who lateral, it's a $20,000 bonus and for all others, it's a 15. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Chief.
Mayor and council, good evening. A couple of things, this past Saturday, Sheriff Luna and I were able to address the elected officials at Contract Cities in Oceanside. We covered a lot of important topics that we're pressing right around now. It was very educational for, for the elected officials. And it's just, we just highlighted the work that we're, we're going to be doing in the next several months with all the LA County agencies and the Sheriff's Department on just a variety of issues. Also, yesterday I was, I spoke at a press conference at the LA, Los Angeles Police Department. And what we did was we announced the arrest of over 200 individuals during a coordinated Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. The arrests took place in three different counties, Orange County, San Bernardino County, and LA County. And very important cases originated out of Southgate. So I just wanted to highlight the work of our detectives who are doing everything they can to keep the children safe. This desk is so important that I've actually committed a full-time detective to now investigate those tips. We just get so many of those tips and Detective Madrano and Detective Vargas are doing a wonderful job. And it's good to have people in those positions that have a heart to really go after the most vile criminals in, in society. So congratulations to them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Excellent job. Ron.
Just regard at some comments about our Paramount Gardendale property that's sitting unused right now. And there was a process described earlier where there was a, RFP put out to ask for options to build affordable housing on that site. Those were reviewed by council a number of months ago and there was a desire to relook at some other options that, that basically the, the economics of doing the program were going to be tough to make work. So in order for us to entertain options that may be slightly different, we had to go to the State Lands Commission, which is now overseeing any decisions on, even though it's local control, city property, we have lost some of that control. So the state is going to see if they're okay with us looking at more creative options for that space that might serve the community better. So we're waiting for their ruling, which still could be many months out. At that time, we'll bring it back to council to see what direction they'd, you'd like to take for that property, which could include putting it back out for an RFP with a broader set of options for people to. set of options for people to propose, including the developer that was mentioned and anybody else. But that would be coming in the coming months. Also want to mention that the library, we support libraries so much that we're we're redoing your driveway, which is also called Tweedy Avenue. But it's I'm thinking of it as the library driveway, so you're welcome. And then also want to notice that on social media, Instagram, today we dropped and and our social media channels, we put on part one of a four-part water quality program that we're going to be educating the community on. So if you check it out, you can see the first stage of all the extensive effort that goes to get water to the community, make sure it's reliable, and most importantly, make sure it's safe. There's tons of work behind the scenes people aren't aware of. So that's this is part one. You'll get to watch as we add the new parts over time and help educate the community that we have great water in Southgate that's really safe, and you can watch it for yourself on social media. Thank you.
City Attorney.
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Another great report. Amazing. Great job. City Treasurer.
Nothing need to report.
Oh, my God, we're on a roll. Oh, my God, here we go. City Clerk.
I have a couple of things. I just wanted to, again, thank our Anna and our Southgate Chamber of Commerce, all of their volunteers for hosting and having such a successful State of the City address. Thank you. We truly appreciate it. Food was delicious. It was a great time. Thank you. I also wanted to state that I will be in a conference next week, 18th and 19th, Wednesday, Thursday. And I also have my staff going to a City Clerk Summit hosted by the L.A. County Registry Quarters Office on Thursday, the 19th. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with travel time. We are going to have the City Clerk's Office closed probably between 8:00 and 2:00 p.m. If anyone has any questions, please reach out to us prior to that. Passport appointments will not be handled that day. It'll be the day before and the following Monday. Again, any questions, you can reach out to me or my staff. And that's basically it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Avalos, you're first.
We'll start from that side. I feel like Mr. Varone is always.
He's anxious.
Anxious.
Anxious to go. Okay, I will honor your request. Councilmember Varone.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to ask one question, and this is something I forgot to ask while we're going through the CIP thing. I had brought up, there's a light on Hunt and Tweedy that is very confusing on making left turns there. And I know that there's a possibility that there could be something that we're working on for that. Is there any update on that?
Yes, not a possibility. We're actually evaluated the intersection already, and we did find a legitimate issue. First, I want to mention that, yes, the intersection meets a standard for the time it was designed. The intersection is considered safe. There hasn't been any major incidents. But we did find that the way it operates, that vehicles could be at a location far enough where the green light is behind them. So the process to address that is very much CIP oriented. So we're working on the final evaluation to do a design. Once it's designed, we're going to go out to bid. But once we have the options, we'll see, depending on what the recommendations are, can we do them through maintenance or what's needed? So we're, all that to say, we're on it, and we're trying to finalize the path forward as soon as possible. It's something that we're working on.
Agreed. Thank you. I've had a couple of phone calls from residents that live there, actually friends of mine that live there. And they say, you probably don't come visit me as much because you don't want to make this left turn. And I go, you're probably right. I use that as the excuse. But also, I just wanted to really also echo what the City Clerk said. You know, thank you to Anna and the Chamber of Commerce for, you know, hosting such a great event for our mayor to be able to provide the information to our residents. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend. You know, I was in the middle of an audit at work, so I had a lot of questions to answer, and I couldn't step away. But I heard a lot of great things. I heard the event was well received. I heard that the directors did an amazing amazing job of doing Gil's work. So, you know, thank you guys for doing that. And Gil, I heard you did an amazing job of keeping it nice and light for everybody. So great job. And then I would like to also point out, I'm going to put on my Selah Kwanas president hat, you know, we do have a few things that are coming up soon. We have a car show in the City of Bell Gardens, which is being assisted with some members of our Southgate Parks Recs Department. They've actually, I believe, I don't want to speak out of the line, but they've allowed for the City of Bell to use our our trailer stage. And it's a great opportunity for, you know, the City of Bell Gardens to try out their first car show. It's going to be at Ford Park on October 8th or 6th. I'm sorry, October 6th is a Sunday. The money raised through this event is going to be used to start the first key club at Bell Gardens High School. That'll be their first key club ever. And we'll be able to provide scholarship opportunities for the key the key club members. And that'll be the Selah's Kwanas first sponsored key club. We hope to be able to do more in the region. We hope to be able to, you know, get make connections with other education, high school educators to say, hey, we want a key club at our school as well. Can you help us? We're ready to sponsor. We've we've done a really good job of fundraising, and we're and we're ready to start helping a lot of residents in our community. And then the last event that we're we're working on or for this time is on October 15th, we're doing a College of Career Fair at Southgate Park. It's from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have UCs, Cal States, private schools, community colleges. We also have union representation. I know our our city is asked, maybe our city will have a booth for employment opportunities for students out of high school. We've asked chief if he would put up a booth for recruitment to the Explorer Program so that way they can come into the police department as well. We really want to highlight what is possible, what the opportunities are for our high school seniors in the region as they come out of school and and give them some, you know, some insight of those opportunities. I'm a strong believer that we are where we are because a person provided us the opportunity to be where we're at. And I think as as a region, we can help that a little bit by just opening their eyes of what's possible. So really, you know, with the with the community colleges, I've spoken to all the representatives there and said, I really want to highlight your CTE programs, your career technical education programs. What can they get? A certificate? What can they get a, you know, a 12, 18-month certificate and be able to be employee employee ready to be able to apply for positions and get jobs? With the unions, you know, go through your journeyman, you know, you start off with this apprentice, and what's the process to become a journeyman? You know, go through that process with these young kids and show them the opportunity that trades out there. So I think it's going to be a great event. We're looking forward to to having a great event. We've reached out to all the local high schools to warn them or to, you know, give them the date. And, you know, I'm very excited of this, and this was definitely going to be a great way to to highlight our region in the in the community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rios.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot today. I just want to congratulate you on a very successful State of the City. I think it was really, really neat to have the event. Always good when you get business community, we get friends of the city, and everybody has a good time. So it was really, really good timing for that. So thank you for working with and the staff that supported you and everybody else that worked on that project. And the other thing, I don't have a lot to read. I just, you know, we had a tragedy in our community, as we already mentioned, Christian Garcia, Southeast football player, playing a week and a half ago. And it's kind of, you know, sad. I'm sad. I mean, and I think, you know, how that happened, and I don't know what we can do, Mayor and the city, to kind of, I know individually, we could support the family, but to make, you know, and I know the big fans here of football, but it's just just so sad that that happens when when you're having a good supposed to have a good time, right? I mean, and so so I just wanted to highlight that because I can't imagine what it feels like to be the family of that loss. So, yeah, so whatever we could do to support the family and the school, because I know that probably the school needed some counseling, and hopefully they got that there and so forth. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I am.
Here we go.
Completely ready. Well, first and foremost, I would like to wish everybody a happy birthday, whose birthdays are in the month of September, as well as any anniversaries. My condolences to the Garcia family for their loss of their young treasure, because that's what our kids are. They're treasures, diamonds in the rough, that we need to continue to polish and nurture and foster and guide, I think. And I think, you know, when one child is lost in our community, we all suffer. Because one voice might not sound loud, but when that one voice shined and pulled and was a leader, it's a huge loss to the community. So my condolences to the family, but also to the families of the shooting that happened in Georgia just recently. And again, it goes back to, you know, the guns and, you know, the lack of guidance, unfortunately, that happened in that situation. I sit on the board of the Greater L.A. Vector Control, and we have a case in Southgate that has West Nile virus. I posted it on my media. I don't know if it made it to the city's website. But again, community, you need to be vigilant. You know, they're small little mosquitoes. You can slap them, but once they bite you, and it's the females that are the biters, not so much the males, they carry a lot of diseases. Just in Baldwin Park, they just have a case with dengue. So Baldwin Park is not that far from Southgate. So again, just be vigilant. If you're going to be out, please protect the little ones with a repellent. Put on repellent. They love people with type O, and they're not my friends at all. So I am type O, and unfortunately, they love to gravitate. So just make sure you are wearing the proper protection. I had an opportunity to attend the Fin Esperanza Fair that they had about raising awareness with substance use and mental health. I just want to thank Pastor Martha for hosting it along with Walls, Land Memorias, and DMH, and the other nonprofits that were there. I think it's important that we start raising this awareness, because unfortunately, we are having a lot more overdoses in our city due to the opioid and the fentanyl issues that are going on around us. Mr. City Attorney, if you can please, maybe in the next meeting, give us some information as to what's going on with Hub Cities and the ARPA funds that were lent to them, as well as whether or not we can use some of those ARPA funds for internships for youth, since I know that those monies are very stringent and strict. Just want some guidance there, because I know that we're going to be coming up against the ending of ARPA, and the feds are going to be auditing us. We just want to make sure that we are up and up in what we're doing with our funds. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, happy Hispanic Heritage Month, by the way. Thank you.
Yes. A lot of countries are celebrating independence, I guess. That was a, thank you for the reminder. Yes.
It is the month.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief report. Last week, the city manager and myself, we attended the South, not the Southgate, the Gateways cog retreat up in Avalon. And there was a lot of information given to us. And I'm going to ask the city manager if he can put together a brief of what they presented to all the all the participants, mayors and council members that attended. And also, yesterday, not yes, yeah, yesterday was Monday, we had the first school safety collaborative meeting, and it was well-attended. Unfortunately, principals did not attend because of the major heat, because they were asked not to leave the schools, because a lot of the schools, not in this area, not in Southgate, their air conditioners were going off. But fortunately, that none of those schools was here in Southgate. Just that to give some information regarding Christopher Garcia, the following day after the the announcement that he that he passed away, that same day and after, they had the impact team, the L.A. USD Impact, and they were there from the morning until they they let him go. A lot of the students got, you know, they talked to the counselors and to the social workers. It was a big a big team that it was there helping them out. But also, a lot of the parents also participated, and they had the they had the services for them. And one of the fundraisers that the coaches are doing in, I believe, October 5th, October 5th, they're doing a, is it a softball game or a football game?
Baseball game with the varsity and the JV teams.
Yeah, they're doing a baseball game, and it's going to be at, I believe, at Southgate Park, because I know they're working with parks right now. And it's going to be a fundraiser. All three high schools are going to be participating, and all the proceeds that get raised that day, it will go to the family. So that's one way that we can support the family and because they do need a lot of funding for for the funeral service and the burial service. And they also got a, they have a to GoFundMe. So I'm going to try to get that link to Giselle so we can put it in our website, if that's possible. And with that, on next Monday, I will be I will be going to Washington, D.C. to advocate for funding for the the Southeast Gateway Line. Hopefully, that we can put our, you know, ask for funding so we can get more of that money so the line can get built, because we do need a lot of billion dollars, you know, to get that line built. So we're going to be advocating, and we're going to be continuing going, and also at the state level. So with that, I'll be gone for three days, which is on Monday, Tuesday, and I'll be back on Wednesday. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So Enrique, thank you for coming. Mr. City Manager, we can see those reports, because this is not the only person I heard from that they submitted a proposal. I don't remember seeing anything. So we can have a discussion on that. I would appreciate we can do that at some point. Doesn't have to be done today. But yeah, I think I'd like to see those. And again, I think the idea, I'm, I see all these empty lots out there, and it's frustrating. They become a magnet for graffiti, discarded furniture, illegally dumped trash. Get reports that homeless people are finding that as a home. And we got to make sure that we do everything we can to address those. And best way of doing it is getting them developed. So hopefully, we can get a good look at that. Anna, thank you for coming tonight. You did a fantastic job with that program. Had a lot of good conversations with a lot of investors out there, and I was very pleased with the turnout as well. I haven't had a chance to see the the video yet, but I've heard some good things about it. So again, thank you for doing that. The issue with the young man that passed away. Look, I coach girls softball at Southgate High, and safety is always the priority. We haven't had practices for a few days. We already did the trials. We've had a, you know, with the heat, we get these warnings, and if it reaches a certain temperature, we're not allowed to even be out there in the in the sun. We're required to be in a classroom, and that's where we go, and we give them instruction. But safety is always the number one priority. I know that in football, it is a very dangerous sport, and all precautions are taken. But I, you know, I hope that when people have an opportunity to take their children to have an opportunity to take their children to the park, and they see an activity like AYSO, like the South Gate JAA, like South Gate Youth Football, that they try to get their children in those programs. This is probably one of the years where I was so terrified during the tryouts, because some of our girls that were returning, they throw the ball pretty hard, and when you see some of the young ladies that are trying out, and the ball just flies by their face and almost hitting them, it just makes the heart go like this, and you've gotta give them a chance to try out. We can't say, oh, you've never played before, next, you know, we can't do that. And it really scares me when a lot, and it's not just girls, the boys, the same thing. They try out for a sport. Look, we had one girl that tried out. Five minutes into the warm-up, she was already throwing up. I'm not saying this in jest, I'm saying it in, in, it's a health thing. These kids, they wanna play, they wanna represent the school, but when they don't have the experience, they expose themselves to injury, you know. Baseball and softball, none of these sports are sports that you can wake up one morning and say, I think I'm gonna play this and play it safely. They require a lot of years of development, and, you know, the, you know, this is why we do what we do with the JAA. And speaking of that, we're in September. This is my last month as president of the JAA. It's gonna be a weird feeling after that, but been a good ride. I really enjoyed my time there, and it's gonna be interesting to see. Luckily, Joshua is there to oversee things a little bit, and we have a lot of really good people that have been part of the program. Same thing with South Gate Youth Football, same thing with AYSO, same thing with South Gate Aquatics, all those organizations do a real good job, and staff is real good at helping us, you know, keep those programs going. But again, it is, it is, I hope that parents try to get their children engaged in those activities. If there's a chance that they wanna play later on, you know, they're prepared. But it's not just about sports, right? They might wanna do dance or whatever, there's a lot of real good activities, and thank you, park staff, for providing those. This heat brought out a lot of outages, and I've been in contact with the folks at Southern California Edison, and a lot of their equipment is really outdated, and they're trying their very best. I know a lot of people get frustrated, I don't know how many conversations the city manager has had, but we work really closely with them, trying to identify areas where, you know, the outages are out. And I want to thank our police department, because I know that when there's an outage, they send extra patrols. I have been told by people, hey, I do see more police out here, but some people don't see them, but I can assure you, maybe the chief wants to say anything on that, but they do have extra patrols out there, but these outages can, are frustrating, and they happen to everybody. I was talking to some folks over at the Thunderbird Villa where I live, it's a private property, and people were knocking on my door, and they thought the manager was messing up. I said, no, no, no. And luckily, I had a text message from Vice Mayor Davila saying, do you have the number to Southern California Edison? Because I'm in the dark. There's a video that a treasurer, De La Paz, put out when he was at the football game, in the middle of the football game at Legacy, the, you know. I hope nobody was getting tackled at the time when the lights went out, but they had the power go on. And then I had like two or three other residents who had sent me text messages, and I said, look, you can't blame the manager here at the Thunderbird Villa for all of these outages, you know, Vice Mayor lives on this street, you know, and this has happened across the ways. It was everywhere. But again, I hope that we can continue to work with Southern California Edison to address those issues. The one area that I'd really like to see a little bit more improvement on at the park is that I keep on reporting graffiti, okay? But when staff is walking around the park, they should see it and report it themselves. I don't know what program there is, but especially when we're having tournaments, and we have people that are coming in from outside, and they see graffiti, that's not an image I want them to leave with. They love our park, they think it's an amazing park, they love how well-groomed it is and everything, but the graffiti has to go. Okay, that's about it. Where are we at? No, we're a consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
Yeah, there we go. All right. Oh, okay.
Agenda items two, three, and four are consent calendar items.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wishes to address us on any of those items? See no one? Do we have any emails?
We have no emails.
No emails? Excellent, okay. Oh, oh, wait a minute. Is she coming back?
I don't know.
Oh.
Motion to approve, we can go on it.
Well, should we wait? No? Okay, there she is. I didn't wanna start, because, that's okay. We're on consent calendar, and we have a motion in a second. Did you wanna talk about any of the items?
No. Let's go.
Okay. I do have a couple of things. Well, I'm sorry, so look, Siaka, chief, can you?
Yeah.
Can you please?
You go.
Yeah, well, you can have them after I give them a...
You go.
An uppercut. No, no. So some people have been complaining about Siaka and the kill issue. Can you kind of sort of give a little bit of background as to how and why there's only Siaka that does the work?
How come there's so many what? I'm sorry.
Okay, so they supposedly, so one of the complaints that a lot of people have is that they pick up a dog, and they have them there just for a day or two, and then they, and I don't think that's the case. I think they have to hold them a little bit longer. But we have a contract with Siaka, and we've had it for years and years and years, and I don't think there's any other provider of that service. Can you kind of sort of just cover that a little bit?
Sure. First and foremost, Siaka is not a humane society. There's a misconception that they take dogs, and then they kill them if they don't find the owner. That's factually incorrect. They are not a humane society. Humane Society is responsible for taking the animals, fostering them, looking for homes. Siaka actually does work with rescues and, that are outside their jurisdiction, and they try to save as many pets as they can. The ones that they have to put down are the ones that are ill, and at the advice of veterinarians, like licensed veterinarians, they'll have to put them down just because they're suffering, but I've heard that many times in the past. We always, annually, I know it's a very expensive endeavor for us, it's required by law to have animal control services, but the L.A. County Humane Society, they don't have the capacity to take on South Gate. We've actually called this year again. We try to update, you know, them every year and ask them if they have the staffing to take on another city, and that doesn't necessarily guarantee better service. That's the downside, is I've talked to people that have contracts with L.A. County, and it's not uncommon to have a two-day response, and it's no knock on L.A. County, I don't know if that's factual, those are just what I heard. But we did reach out this time and ask them if they had the capacity to do that. At one time, we actually reached out to Long Beach as well, and it's a, it's a big endeavor to take on animal control services for a city. I couldn't imagine taking on another city. So we do work with them, and I mean, Siaka, when we have issues. This past year, had a little bit more complaints than usual, but I've been in contact with the executive director, Denise Woodside, and I actually specifically address a lot of the concerns, and they're very responsive when it comes to the complaints, and they, we try to be that conduit with the residents that complain when they're very specific, but we don't get a lot of complaints. I've just, you know, I've noticed last year there were a little bit more than usual, but by and large, it's not, we don't get complaints every day about Siaka.
Thank you. Councilman Avalos, did you want to add anything on that?
No, but I think we do need to address some of the discrepancies and the miscommunication and the misinformation. I know for a fact that if they do pick up a dog, they don't euthanize them immediately. They actually go out of their way to get the animals a humane medical treatment. They will literally drive them out to Fountain Valley, where there is a slew of specialists, of veterinarians that specialize in certain things, to get the animals as healthy as possible, if there is even a possibility. And if there isn't, then they euthanize them. But, and I got a lot of those complaints in my email, that that's what they were doing. So when I actually took it upon myself and looked into it, I realized that was not the case. So again, we have to have some form of animal control, and I did inquire early on, can we become part of the JPA so that we're not paying the exorbitant amount? Unfortunately, it was too late, and to be able to do that is just not cost-effective. So, other than that, that's my two cents worth.
Okay, so we have...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, if I could just add to that. I know, you know, I adopted a pet from Siaka a year ago. Actually, just going through my visit to see what the facility was, looked like, I made the mistake of taking my little daughter with me, and I walked out with an animal.
Oh, how many feet you come out with?
So, so I'm a proud parent of another female dog, or a female dog. In my home, I have another dog as well. So I will say the staff there is very receptive to help, to volunteer hours. I think that one of the things that I've, I heard when I was there taking the tour was, this really is a human problem. We need to be better pet owners as human beings. We have responsibilities to ensure that we keep our pets secure and safe at home. If they're out and get out, it is our responsibility not just to get them chipped, but also, there's a missing component that a lot of residents don't realize they have to do, is actually register that chip to a phone number, to an address, and to an individual, because, yes, the animal is chipped, but when they scan it, it comes back to nobody. And when it comes to the facility, one of the things that they had last year that really spiked the number of animals that they euthanized, was they had a disease that actually went through their kennel. And, and what ended up happening is, they had to separate the animals, and there was a large group of them that were not able to be saved because they were so sick. And it was spreading through even healthy dogs that were going there just for regular veterinarian checkups, because it was spreading, it was so contagious, it was spreading to them as well, and a lot of those animals didn't make it. So there's a lot of things that they have to control, a lot of, you know, you know, circumstances that they have to be held accountable, you know, reliable for. So I'm very sympathetic when it comes to the amount of work that it takes for them to really, you know, make that facility run the way it does. And I ask any resident, I know, you know, we show up to places like Siaka when our pet gets lost, and they gets picked up, and it may not be the best experience, because we have to drive to Downey to go pick up the animal, and it may take a little longer than it's expected, but try volunteering on your off time to be part of the solution that is there. They're a great facility, they're a great group of people there who are always happy to take volunteers, so I urge the residents to please get involved.
If I can just add, that's one thing I did want to comment. Coming out of COVID, there was a lot of pet owners that didn't want to carry the pets, the responsibility of being pet owners anymore. In fact, I'm with you, I have a hard time going there, because I'll probably end up living with the dog. The last dog that I rescued from Siaka was chipped. It was taken to Siaka, they contacted the owner, and the owner said they didn't want the dog anymore, so I took him home. So if there's anything that I would say is that, you know, it's a, it's a long commitment, if you want to have a pet, and they should be part of your family. We encourage people that if you can't get into it for the long run, then you probably shouldn't, because, you know, we don't want to put animals in that situation where we're looking for a home, but if Siaka does a good job of trying to find placement, care for the dogs, and then find rescues when appropriate.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, but I'm gonna recuse myself from item number two. It's dealing with the urban orchard, and it's within 500 feet of where I live.
Thank you.
Item number five.
The city council will consider approving funding in the amount of $10,000 annually, beginning retroactively in July 2024, from the membership dues for the Southeast Gateway Line Corridor Cities Committee, formerly the WSAB Corridor Cities Committee. Thank you, Mayor.
Any additional comments?
I can just briefly summarize this, this new group, which is reconstituted from a earlier group, but the ultimate goal of this is to help have a team-oriented for multiple cities that are all going to be impacted or helped by our new Gateway Line, which is light rail transit that will be running from Artesia all the way and connecting to downtown L.A., and it'll be a major addition to the communities. We will have essentially two stations on this line in South Gate, one slightly in Downey, but right beside South Gate, the other one will be by the Azalea Mall. These are many years out, but the project has started. They will start doing right-away acquisitions, they'll be doing some construction, just crossings, and then will come major construction a few years out at the sites for the stations. So this is going to have a lot of impacts, both positive and during constructions, negative. So we want to have a team that works together to figure out the rest of the funding that's needed, to figure out how to make sure the project is done in a coordinated method that limits the impacts, and that we ensure the best solution for the city. So this committee will work with the Gateway COG and include a membership fee that will include, for the member, the council member stipend capped at $700 a year, reimbursement for travel that can be needed for advocacy, such as next week's Washington, D.C. trip, where Vice Mayor Davila will be representing the city as part of this team, as well as all the staff support that we will be having, including a engineering staff support that will help us liaison with the Metro Group when it gets into all the requests, so it takes a load off our staff. So I think it's a good value, it's recommended that we join this team and pay this amount.
Okay, let me open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item? See no one? I'm gonna close the audience portion. Do we have any emails on this?
We have none.
None, okay, I'm gonna close that part. Okay. I don't know if you want to add anything else, or just make a...
Ask the attorney, since I'm in the board right now, can I abstain? Should I, should I abstain?
You should.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, no, I just want to mention that yesterday, or just this week, past week, the Valley folks got some federal dollars for their line, so it's important that our colleague here goes to Washington with the other Southeast leaders, and make sure we make that push, so it's timely.
Got a motion?
So make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. She beat you to it, Mr. Rios. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm gonna recuse myself from this item.
Thank you. Mayor Orado.
Yes. Okay, next item, paying the bills.
The warrant registers. The city council will consider approving the warrant register for September 10th of 2024. Grand total is $4,835,392.44. Cancellations are 107055. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and open up to any member here in the audience, if they have any questions regarding the warrant register. Did we receive any emails regarding the warrant?
No emails.
I'll bring it back to council. What are your wishes, if you have any questions?
Move approval.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Orado?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're winding down.
Mayor Orado, if I can interrupt quickly, I just wanted to just kind of announce Tina's return from her, from her leave, and this is her first meeting back, and I just wanted
And this is her first meeting back, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. I'm so proud of you. And if we can have a couple of minutes for her to say something?
Yeah, I actually wanted to say to my report, and I forgot to do it, but just want to say thank you to the city just for everything, the support, and everything that everyone provided during the six months I was off. And it was nice to be part of a family that just sticks together and is so supportive. So thank you all very, very much.
Welcome back.
Well, we know you're healthy because we saw you spike a touchdown on a video.
Yep.
You were wearing the wrong uniform, though, but that's okay.
Good job.
And, yeah, that was a... Mr. City Manager, that was a great job with the video. I've had, actually, quite a few people tell me that they're enjoying those videos that show a lot of, you know, unity within our departments and stuff like that. So thank you for bringing that to... I don't know, that was your idea. Just take credit for it, what the hell?
Yeah.
Which ones? The ones with the football, the one that was not included in? Thank you very much.
You were teaching. You were doing something important, teaching the children.
I only want credit for the ones that are unanimously loved by everyone.
Uh-oh, well then now...
Yes, we all need to be inclusive and equitable and fair.
We'll put you down on the neck. That was a football video, so when...
You and I need to do one.
So when we're doing the... When we're doing the ping-pong one, we'll call you.
With the ping patch. Ping patch.
Mayor, again, welcome, Tina Bach.
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Hispanic Heritage, John D.
Okay. Motion adjourned? Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Have a nice evening.